I appreciate that introduction. And it's like a weird mic setup here, right? It's just like freaking out. And I appreciate your remarks about Danbury's business community. I can basically say my speech is done because you pretty much hit all the highlights. So I really appreciate that. Ladies and gentlemen, we're joined by a number of elected officials today. I'm going to announce them. And if we could give like one collective round of applause at the end, that would be a little bit easier because there are a lot of folks here. But I think it's important to recognize them because they took time out of the day. So in no particular order, we have our city treasurer, Dan Jowdy, is here. Our town clerk, Lori Kayback, is here. We've got city council members, Jay Nederzett, Phil Curran, Joe Skazavala, Warren Levy, Tom Sade, Andrew Wetmore, Ben Sheenice. We're also joined by our council president, Joe Calum. We also have the state senator, Mike McLaughlin, chairman of our zoning commission, Rob Malillo. We're also joined by our police chief, Al Baker, our fire chief, Jeff Harrell, deputy fire chief, TJ Guido, first elected Rudy Martinis here from Ridgefield, and a former state senator, good friend of mine, David Caffiel, was joining us as well. Let's give all of them a round of applause. Of course, thank you for being here this afternoon. It's appreciated in terms of the chamber, in terms of the work that you do. Obviously, congratulations to our board for Jim Markey and his team as recipient of the Cecil J. Fred Day Award. As Mayor of Danbury, I'm proud to see Jim and his business flourish in our great city. Kim Chuck's success is a direct reflection of Jim's drive, his energy, his enthusiasm, and his vision. Ladies and gentlemen, Danbury works because frankly, we all work together. We do that regardless of party. We do that to move the agenda of our community forward. And of course, all of us from time to time in government disagree. That's to be expected. That's the process, if you will. But when our debate is over, we always figure out a way to compromise. We figure out a way to make it work. And I'd like to say to all of our state and local elected officials who are here today and who served Danbury, the greater Danbury area, they understand that compromises will move our community forward. They understand that our residents are served, are not served when we dig in and when we refuse to bend. So I want to thank them for being here today. And before I begin a little bit more formal remarks, I want to thank somebody who is the wheel mayor of the city of Danbury. Let's get this straight. And that would be my wife, Phyllis Chauvin, First Lady of the city of Danbury, sitting right over there hiding. Ladies and gentlemen, without the reports, we've had a terrific year as far as new business growth and economic development are concerned in the city of Danbury. Think about it. The Danbury Hospital has broken ground on $150 billion expansion. Western Connecticut State University has broken ground in its Performing Arts Center. The Army will soon break ground in a new Army Reserve Center in Lee Park. The Danbury Fair Mall has filled the old Fly League space with a cheesecake factory. And by the way, why can't you ever get into that place? I'm the mayor and I can't get in there. I want to go away now. They now have also opened Brio, Dicks Forty Good is there as well, and they've just announced plans for an L.L.B. in that particular part of the building. The shops at Marcus Derry are under construction with Whole Foods, which will be their anchor tenant. And over the last several months, I've attended groundbreakings and we've announced expansions at places like Goodrich, 50 Bo's, DRS Technologies, and Borger Ingolat. The Reserve has begun to build again, and thanks to Union Savings Banks, we have broken ground on a new building on Main Street. The Matrix Carpet Center has done a phenomenal job at recruiting employees to their facility. This year, we've cut the ribbons to welcome companies like Gator Post, Jetta Motors, SDB, and several others at their facility. And right now, as we speak, we are in final negotiations with several blue chip organizations. And if everything works out just right, and the better, by early 2012, we hope to announce new relocations that will add significant job growth to more reason. Now, I know the news factory's sending over there, they want to know who that is. But I am sworn to absolute secrecy by penalty of death, so I can't tell them. But we'll get it done, and you'll get the story along with that. Where's Martin? Very soon. Okay. Got to go to the table first. So I guess you could say our phones are ringing again at city law and across the community. And it's probably the reason why, as Judge Diane mentioned, that our unemployment continues to be the lowest in the state. It's no accident. It's because we sent a very loud and very clear message that we are a pro-jobs community. And that's good news for us locally. And it's something that this Chamber of Commerce and this community ought to be incredibly proud of. And we still have a ways to go in terms of housing industry and other soft spots across the state. But we have to continue to be relentless and to be fearless when it comes to creating jobs for our residents. These are challenging economic times. They demand the very best in us, and there is no margin for error when it comes to economic development. Last year, I came to you and reported that we would be hiring a full-time Director of Economic Development. This past spring, the city council approved funding for that position. I'm proud to announce today that I've approved the hiring of Bruce Tavalla for the position of Director of Economic Development for the city of Danbury. Bruce, stand up and give a wave. Bruce comes to us with a wide resume of business development and a wide resume of community outreach. He has a unique blend of talents that varies in a broader business perspective with the intimacy and the needs of our Main Street. The focus of our new Director of Economic Development will be two-fold. First, to market our 44 square miles to any business that wants to come to Danbury, stay in Danbury, or expand in Danbury. The message has got to be that while we cannot control state policies and national politics, we are open for business in Western Connecticut. Second, Bruce, you taking notes over there? You writing this down? All right. Second, Bruce will be working closely with a new agency, a new entity, that has been created to market and manage Main Street, the Danbury Main Street Partnership. The past year, we created this entity by ordinance and solicited people who would be interested in donating their time to improve Main Street. To our delight, there were so many people interested that we had to make some tough choices as to who we would ask to serve on the partnership. And for those who were not selected, I don't want you to get upset. Fear not, we will have more than many opportunities to participate in a variety of different communities and policy groups as we begin to enhance the engagement of Main Street and my administration. Our city council is currently considering proposals from the city to lower permit fees and to lower sewer and water connection fees along the Main Street corridor. Imagine that, a government actually lowering the cost of doing business. The zoning commission has already created the downtown revitalization district, or DRZ, revitalization zone, or ERZ. Rounding will be considered of Main Street and including more properties that will be eligible to take advantage of these new incentives. And while I think everyone agrees that Main Street has great buildings, great bones, if you will, and enormous potential, Bruce and the Main Street Partnership, as well as Andrea Gardner and the City Center organization, can't begin to think strategically about how to leverage the changes to our regulations and how to leverage our new package of economic incentives to encourage growth and development along the Main Street corridor. I also believe that the key to successful Main Street is to locate city services and agencies whenever possible along that corridor. For example, the addition of Nagertuck Community College has been helpful in putting people on Main Street during the day and during the evening hours. There are almost 700 students now using the Main Street building. The city of Danbury has a lot of tough choices to make as it relates to expanding space for our schools. And when possible, we ought to locate these new facilities on Main Street, or at least close to the ERZ. Besides the students, schools bring staff, they bring support personnel, and they bring other adults downtown, who will use the facilities of the stores and restaurants located on Main Street. And with service from the Hart Bus Line, the Danbury Public Library, and access to many other amenities like Western Connecticut State University, locating any of our new school facilities along the Main Street corridor will be important for the stability of Main Street. In the next two years, we will have to deal with the challenge of growing and moment in our public school system. Folks, this is good news that people want to live in Danbury. Because while other cities and towns across Connecticut are actually getting smaller, particularly cities, people are sending a message that they want to live here. It's no accident that this year, Danbury was ranked as the fifth-best city to live in the state of Connecticut by Connecticut Magazine. So to put that in perspective for you, Danbury was ranked higher than Bristol, Stratford, Middletown, New Haven, Milford, and Hartford for our outstanding quality of life. We were only at clips like Greenwich, Stanford, West Hartford, and Fairfield, communities that are obviously much more wealthy than we are. And while investing in our education system is not something that we are frankly in a position to do right now, it is something that we must do to preserve our property values and our quality of life. In April, I will ask the voters to approve a modest borrowing to cover the cost of addressing our space needs for our schools, and we're going to have a straightforward and honest discussion about the cost of staffing that new space to meet the needs of our children into the next decade. I've already spoken with Dr. Casswell, our superintendent of schools, and asked him to design the next generation of programming for the new space. Programming that will not just focus on putting kids at the chair, but will help all of us, including Bruce, market the total community as a great place to live, to work, and to be educated in. And while the 2020 task force report is being finalized, I envision the acquisition of a new building to house two middle school academies, a science, technology, engineering, and math academy, or what we call a STEM academy, that we hope to partner with a local corporation that will provide resources and mentoring. Hands, hands. Everybody else I want to take down would be appreciated. And we will add grades six, seven, and eight to our popular elementary magnet school. Both academies will hold approximately 375 students that will help us manage the numbers at our middle schools. And Danbury, like any other community during this economic crisis, besides education costs, is faced with significant financial challenges related to the cost of, for example, employee benefits and salaries. So today, I'm proud to announce and report that we've been working in a cooperative spirit, a cooperative fashion with our unionists to restructure compensation levels, as well as pensions, medical costs, and retiree medical costs. And there will be a short-term expense to these contracts. The changes over the long term will bend the cost curve for our taxpayers. So I just want to be clear, we have redefined public employment through these new contracts in a way never done before. And if these agreements are ratified by the union members, many new employees will be participating in a defined contribution plan rather than a traditional pension plan. Healthcare plans have been retooled to be more in line with the private sector. And in some contract provisions, things like longevity payments have been eliminated, and retiree medical has been eliminated as well. When taken together in their totality, these changes to our new contracts will save billions of dollars in future expenses and make our government more sustainable for generations to come. These weren't fun discussions to have. They're difficult to have, but I have to give credit to the leadership of all of our collective bargaining units that understood what was at stake for our community. Union contracts are not the only thing on our mind to help reduce costs. Working smarter, more efficiently has been critical to us. Every department in my administration has been asked to participate in redesigning city government. And I'm going to give you a couple of examples. Our Chief Harrell's direction of the fire department has implemented a pilot program to have our firefighters respond to non-fire-related calls with an S U P that is equipped with medical supplies and equipment. This vehicle, what we call the SRV, now responds to the 75% of calls to our fire department that are not a working fire. This reduces the wear and tear on our more expensive trucker trucks and ladder trucks. In addition, the new vehicle saves our taxpayers thousands of dollars in diesel fuel when our firefighters are called out to go to the local shopping center to help someone who has locked their keys in their car. And Chief Baker from our police department has also implemented a new pilot program that has added multi-directional cameras to our police cars that can read multiple license plates from multiple views all at once to determine if the vehicle has elapsed registration, or is insured, or is rented, and stolen property. The cameras work in a millisecond and save time and manpower on what was once a laborious process in Connecticut. These license plates, one at a time, to determine if the car is properly registered and insured. Both chiefs are working together on our new civilian dispatch center that will save hundreds of thousands of dollars in overtime costs. The city will issue an RFP right after the first idea to hire an outside venue to do our dispatching of fire, police, and EMS from our new police station. A rollout will be sometime in the summer of '12. Our finance department and our IT department will be implementing a new core software system that will help us better track expenses, will help us reduce redundant paperwork, and ultimately, over the long term, personnel has more functions become automated. And of course, we look at the revenue side of the budget. If you have your card rooted, you probably figured that out. Sorry about that, by the way. We are one of the most creative, innovative tax collectors, I think, in the state. Scott Curtis spends his time coming up with new ways to apply taxes that are new. That's why you can look at our budget book, you'll see that we routinely made a 99% to 100% collection rate. Several years ago, I came to explain that the city of Danbury would like to purchase a transfer station located at 307 Wyche. As negotiations dragged on and the economy continued, its talent was filed, it became clear that a public-private partnership would probably be a lot less risky for the city, and would still provide an opportunity to provide value for us. And this year, Winter's Brothers Incorporated, and I see Joe sitting back there, and the city of Danbury have signed a metal understanding that will provide transparency to the facility and will generate a significant amount of new dollars for Danbury. Last year, our monitoring was upgraded by both S and P and Pitch. They gave us positive outcomes. I'm confident we will maintain our current operating as well as our credit ratings, given these changes to our employee benefits and our tight management of city finances. Just make no mistake, the next several months here won't be easy, given the foreign count and lack of state aid and the pressures of funding our schools. Our residents can feel good that our long-term forecast has grown dramatically. And folks, I got to confess, this past year was a long and difficult one, difficult one both professionally and personally. Let me think about it. We started off with some of the worst snowfalls in recent memory. Those snowfalls brought roof collapses. I actually had to order our firefighters on roofs to shovel roofs of homes before they collapsed on some of our seniors in our schools. We moved through the spring and summer during the rainy season in the history of Danbury. We had not one, but two tropical storms that brought record amounts of flooding and damage to many parts of the city, and of course, an extended power outage. We then had a late-season October snowfall that was arguably the worst in our history in terms of damage to our city. That October storm brought down limbs and gave us a second extended power outage that was worse than the first. And during all that, I'll never forget how strong this community was. I got to tell you, I was so proud of my wife, Phyllis. She spent several days at the memorial, comforting and feeding those residents who could not go home. I was honored to work side by side with our first responders, my staff, Wayne Shepherd, PJ Fronti, Lisa Munoz, John Savis, and all of them who came in over the weekends to answer calls for our business. PJ rode out in the middle of the downed power lines to help a senior to his car to bring him to our shelter. All of that went above and beyond the call. I also want to recognize Antonio Agrola, Director of Public Works, Chief Baker, and Chief Harrell. Duke Carter, Superintendent of Highways, and Paul Estefan are Director of Emergency Management for their outstanding service with Newbury and the residents during this difficult time. Ashtray, the company that collected debris from the storm, left Danbury this morning. Thank God. For the record, Ashtray collected over 100,000 yards of debris. They cleared 3,184 tree limbs off of trees that were ready to fall, and they cut down 27 trees for a grand total cost of $3.8 million. The total damage suffered to the fall storms from January 1st, 2011, for both public and private buildings, is in the tens of millions of dollars. The Portuguese Club alone sustained almost $4 million worth of damage on the roof. So I know how difficult it's been for you. And when you think about that stuff, you have to wonder, is that important to us? Of course it is. Absolutely. And do I wake up in the middle of that and worry about these costs? No question about it. Phyllis will tell you that. But I think in the long run, when we look at the totality of our lives, does it really matter? About that, I'm not so sure. You see, at the same time that we were managing the storms, the roof collapses, the floods, the policing of the city, the power outages, seniors that needed help, disabled people that needed oxygen. My own father was taking the final journey to his resting place. He was making his peace with God and what lies beyond during that last October snow. He did this while I held his hand. It was a beautiful moment. For me, it was a life-changing moment because I realized that that's the part of life that really matters. And I mention this personal experience not to point me out in the middle of the holidays, but because I want you to take a moment and ask yourself during this holiday season, what's important? And then think about what really matters. Is it important that you have the next promotion or get to that big job? Sure. Sure is. Does it really matter? Is it important that you have a brush on your front lawn that the city hasn't picked up? Absolutely. Does it really matter? Oh, we will recover it. Ladies and gentlemen, we live in a great city of eternal optimism, limitless potential, that can overcome any obstacle like Florida's law. And we always seem to get through it. That, to me, is what matters. We're making the city made up of beautiful, a beautiful mosaic of people from all over the world. And you know what? They all kind of hit along, and we all figure it out together. That's what matters. We live in a city where people want to do business with entrepreneurial flamebirds right from small startups, small and medium-sized businesses, to our corporate partners every single day. That's what matters. We live in a city that cares for the less fortunate. If we do more for those in need than most cities in the state of Connecticut do combined, that's what matters. So I want you to feel good about our city, our state, and our country. This is the holiday season. Live, laugh, love, laugh, and celebrate with your friends, your family, your coworkers, your neighbors, because that's what truly matters. Ladies and gentlemen, that is the state of our city for 2011. May God bless you, and may God bless your great city of Danbury.
This time, I'll call Mr. Scott. I'll call the meeting to order. This time, I ask that we stand. Sean Hatch, and you will ask two of the first up to do this in the question.
Thanks for having me back on the mic. Let's get started. Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sean. And you currently in business practice?
Together we pray. If there is to be peace on earth and goodwill towards men, we must believe in the morality of the universe. We must not lose that hope. We must pray for that dream. That one day, man will rise up and see that they are made to live together as brothers. That all men will be judged on the basis of their character. That men will respect the dignity and worth of the human personality. That brotherhood will be the first order of business on every legislative agenda. That those elected will work justly, love mercifully, and walk humbly with their God. With this faith, we will speak to the day when there will be peace on earth and goodwill towards men. In the words of Martin Luther King Jr., we ask your blessing, Lord, on this council as we begin the work of 2012, a new year of grace for the citizens of our city. We continue to pray for our servicemen and women and their families as they work to defend our cherished freedoms. Amen.
Will the clerk please hold it all?
Curran?
Here.
Cadet?
Yeah.
Nap?
Present.
Levy?
Here.
Seaberry?
Here.
Stanley?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Cola?
Here.
Nederzett?
Present.
Hellus?
Here.
Cabo?
Present.
Sade?
Here.
Visconti?
Here.
Traometta?
Present.
Wetmore?
Present.
Nero?
Here.
Perkins?
Present.
Sheenice?
Present.
Rotello?
Here.
Skazavala?
Here.
Taisho?
Present.
One of the 20 presentants who want to have some please on the record reflector, Mr. Sade is on voluntary. The first 30 minutes of each council meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council. I'd ask members of the public to please address the council by either that is specifically on the agenda this evening, and a reminder, you must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the city of Danbury to address the council. With that, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council? Any member of the council? Yes, ma'am. And yeah, come to the microphone and just your name and address of the right.
Marion Liberati, L-A-B-E-R-A-T-I. Long, no, Old Lantern Road, sorry, off Long Bridge. I care about the item regarding bicycles and pocket parks. I think it's very important that that ad hoc committee be formed so that when federal and state money is available, we're prepared to move forward and not stuck spinning our wheels. No comment intended. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to address the council as well?
I got somebody in the phone, I'm sorry.
Glen Waller, 83 Highland Avenue, Danbury. First, I wanted to, it's got to be in all of the reports, thank you for all the cleanup and retreats. I know it caused a lot of pain and we thought it caused, but I appreciate what you've done. The town looks so neat now with everything's gone. You can drive down the street and just swat. So thank you. And I know it's going to cost us money, but that's how it goes.
It is what it is.
Yeah, it is what it is. And I'm also here to address the pocket parks. I do agree that this is something that's important to do to be ready. I also would like to mention that I don't want to add new pocket parks and take away ones that we already have. I am very happy with the Highland Avenue Park. It serves 44 to 80 children. And the focus of achieve through the CDC is to make the healthy choice the easy choice in our communities. To achieve this, all sectors of the community need to work together. And I was pleased to see that this Agenda Item is on the, is up for, like, for discussion. So I am speaking in support of Agenda Item Number Six, which is the formation of an ADHOC committee to study the efficacy of local parks and pedestrian pathways, because a good solution solves multiple problems, and for the city of Danbury, that is health, safety, and economic development. Thank you very much.
Maureen, what's your address, please?
Well, the Regional Y and C A, we have Escape to the Arts and Fountain Street.
Okay. Just so we're clear, you have to be a taxpayer and/or resident of the city of Danbury. Thank you for the compliments, I'll take it.
Thank you.
But just for anybody else, if you must be a taxpayer or resident of Danbury, it's best of course. But thank you, I appreciate it. This is, uh, wait, we'll let the ladies first, we'll let, sorry about that. Come on up, Mrs. Mitchell, you wanna miss it?
I am a taxpayer in the city of Danbury, and my name is Margaret Mitchell, and I own property on the corner of Main Street and Park Place. And frankly, I liked what the lady before me said, so I just say ditto to what she said. Pocket parks that are easy for children to get to from their homes and encourage exercise is a good thing. We've got to be real creative about how we do it, because, of course, we all know, right at the start, there's no money. But having a plan in mind would be a good thing. We have a recreation advisory group, at least we used to, to the Parks and Rec. Perhaps this ADHOC committee could help us with the Parks and Rec advisory group and help move these ideas forward. Thank you.
Okay, sir, I'm sorry. My name is Sean Cavanagh, living at the Waldorf, Fountain Street, in Danbury, Connecticut, and I'm too here to support, I believe, item number six, of the parks. And as a cyclist and a father of two twin boys who are three years old at this point, I think I'm excited about the opportunity to hopefully provide a safer environment for all children to be able to ride their bikes through our city. I think it's kind of nerve-wracking to watch children ride their bikes through the city at times, and I think it's a great opportunity to not only improve the system for myself, but for children of the future and to get kids on their bikes, and also to get them to the parks and save them as improved by.
How many other members of the public wish to address the council?
Good evening. My name is Darren Malapie. I'm located at Nineteen Main Street, Danbury, Connecticut. I'm also a business owner, and I'm here to also talk about the pocket parks, and also I open up a non-pocket organization, fighting children obesity. We have an organization that we're crying out to the community to come out and support us. We open up a small facility for families and parents to come out, exercise free. I mean, we take little donations. We have onsite nutritionists. There's a lot of activities that we do here, and I'm just hoping that everybody can come out and support us. We have an open house on the seventeenth of January, and we have Senator McLaughlin coming out, and I wish that some of our leaders can come out and support, see what kind of work we're doing here with children obesity and parents. It's really out of control, I mean, very, very out of control. The kids are actually dying from diabetes, high blood pressure, I mean, eight years old, seven years old. Have the facts, I'm gonna have all the facts there, so on the seventeenth, if you guys can come out and meet with us, it'll be a great appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Darrell.
Good evening. My name is Darren Malapie. I'm located at Nineteen Main Street, Danbury, Connecticut. I'm also a business owner, and I'm here to also talk about the pocket parks, and also I open up a non-pocket organization, fighting children obesity. We have an organization that we're crying out to the community to come out and support us. We open up a small facility for families and parents to come out, exercise free. I mean, we take little donations. We have onsite nutritionists. There's a lot of activities that we do here, and I'm just hoping that everybody can come out and support us. We have an open house on the seventeenth of January, and we have Senator McLaughlin coming out, and I wish that some of our leaders can come out and support, see what kind of work we're doing here with children obesity and parents. It's really out of control, I mean, very, very out of control. The kids are actually dying from diabetes, high blood pressure, I mean, eight years old, seven years old. Have the facts, I'm gonna have all the facts there, so on the seventeenth, if you guys can come out and meet with us, it'll be a great appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Darrell.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Sartor, I'm a resident of Danbury, under twenty-seven here in Alabana. I'd like to speak to the department reports this evening, specifically, the first one would be the police department report, just a matter of noting some statistics that are already here. The calls for service this November as opposed to last November, the same period, is down two point five percent, which is approximately one hundred and seventeen calls, and there's a difference of eight hundred and forty calls for the year through November as opposed to last year. Traffic enforcement for the month of November this year as opposed to last year is down five hundred and eight actions, which is a whopping sixty-one percent. I just think we can do better on that somehow. I'm not sure what the difference in the numbers are, they're pretty drastic, but in any event, I think we can do better. The other department report I'd like to talk about is the water department. And in the water department, there's a notation, and there's a hundred and thirteen fire hydrants out of service last month, and I know that that's pretty, that's taken quite a bump up the last few months, and I know that fire hydrants are touchy issues because they're, there's always something out of service with them. They're a difficult item to maintain. However, I did see a big jump in that, in the hundred and thirteen fire hydrants. One of my suggestions might be to put that list in the report, let's see the list. People certainly want to know whether or not the fire hydrant that's near or in front of their house or down the street is working, and most people haven't a clue that that's the case. Back in February of two thousand and ten, actually, two thousand and eleven, almost a year ago, there was a serious fire on Hausman Street at about the stroke of midnight. I think you were there, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure, but the fire department was hampered by a frozen fire hydrant in that location. That does happen, but what disturbs me is, I recently took a ride by there, in fact, today, and the fire hydrant in question is right in front of the house, and it's still, it's leaking, it's frozen. And the only reason I noticed it was because there's icicles coming out of it and because of the cold weather. So the bottom line in this issue is the same, very same fire hydrant that caused three firefighters to be pulled from the firefighting operations. It's waiting to happen again. This hydrant is probably inoperable right now, and the data on that was that if it wasn't for volunteer company Five West or Hose, the water supply to that fire would have been even more seriously injured. And as it was, there was one firefighter injured, and there also was three residents that luckily got out of the house. So I think we should pay attention to our safety issues. One other situation I'd like to mention is the forestry department. And my understanding is, in November, there was fourteen thousand dollars in overtime, and I find it very distressful that that overtime is so high, coupled with the fact that record-keeping in that department really needs to be looked at, and I hope somebody would pick up the ball on that. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to address the council?
Hi, good evening. Andrei Gardner, sixteen, East Town Road. Tonight, I'm talking to, in my capacity as Executive Director, City Center Danbury, and on behalf of my Board of Commissioners, addressing item number six. Dear members of the City Council, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners of City Center, I'd like to offer our organization's support of initiatives that spur fit and healthy community development. We endorse the concept of what it would mean to broaden the health-related recreational activities to the downtown, and we welcome an invitation to participate in conversation of what that interpretation would look like in the special services district. Given the focus on spurring development in our urban core, City Center Danbury suggests a recreational project that improves downtown by incorporating existing green space and augmenting downtown walkability, rather than one that calls for condemning or purchasing of existing properties for park conversion. A future project could enlist support on many fronts by capturing the energy surrounding the Usatani Valley Cultural Alliance artist enthusiasm in providing public art downtown, a discussion that has gained great momentum recently, and the wellness programs that are the focus of many of our children-based community organizations. For example, a recreational circuit that children can enjoy with their families could be created downtown utilizing spots at Kennedy Park, Post Office Walk, The Green, Palace Walk, Library Plaza, Fountain Street, Elmwood Park, the Senior Center, and Danbury Museum. Installations at these locations that are climbable, touchable, or bangable, something on residents, for example, would form an engaging room for people of all ages. When these circuit stations are constructed by local artists, recreation and downtown placemaking are enhanced with cultural aesthetics, a beneficial attraction by anyone's standards. City Center Danbury appreciates and supports a fit and healthy community initiative that is inclusive and encouraging in bringing culture, innovation, and energy to our downtown. Also, speaking on Agenda Item Number Two, City Center welcomes the appointment of the Economic Development Director, Ms. Tamala, and we're looking forward to working with the Danbury Main Street Partnership and implementing the task force recommendations for Danbury Year 2012 in downtown. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to address the council? Please. Please, if you can, your cell phone, please. Mucho greatly appreciated.
Hello, my name is John Doon, ninety-nine Hospital Avenue, Danbury. Two years ago, I got involved with a environmental health promotion program through the Western Connecticut State University Health Promotion and Exi Science Department, and myself and several students went into the downtown area to try to make an environmental impact somewhere downtown in Danbury. We did a survey while we were there, and we found that most of the residents downtown that we did survey were basically looking for a park to be built for their children. Basically said they weren't enough parks for their kids in the area, and it was a little bit unsafe for their kids to play in what was existing. So I'm bringing to you, to your attention tonight, this survey, I actually have the results of it right here. We worked with the community for about two years in an attempt to try to create some parks for them and to find out the best way to serve them. But we were only on a two-year project, we were unsuccessful in actually creating a park, but we did engage much of the community in the downtown area to this project and determining what they needed. I also like to, I also like to say that during that time, we investigated what the potential park possibilities were in the area, and we found that there was, you know, maybe possibly not much investment, that there were a lot of potential places that parks could be built in the downtown area for residents in that area. So I hope that an ADHOC committee is formed, I hope that you look at this seriously, as some of the former residents have stated about the condition of the children, the condition of the people, physically and psychologically, of course, parks would definitely be a benefit to this community at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to address the council, please? Seeing none, then we'll move on with our meeting. I have several quick announcements this evening. I believe we have a couple of wedding anniversaries this month. January twenty-sixth is Greg and Barbara Seaberry's wedding anniversary. January twenty-eighth is Lee and Mary Teicholz's wedding anniversary. Couple other events throughout the month I just want to point out to you. We had a wonderful December Project Homeless Connect program over at the Bill Williams Gym, gym at Western Connecticut State University, and so we're having a volunteer appreciation hour or so at Western Connecticut Mental Health Network at Seventy-Eight Triangle Street. Just to say thanks to all the folks that showed up and helped work with our homeless population in a variety of different capacities. Be welcome to stop by there if it's interesting to you. January fifteenth, St. James Episcopal Church, two-hundred-and-fifty-year celebration of Thanksgiving. There's a ten a.m. service, obviously that's across the street, and then a twelve-thirty luncheon at Amber Colonnade, costs forty dollars per person. The sixteenth, City Hall's closed in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. I don't have any information yet on any of the Martin Luther King Jr. events, but I'm sure I'll have those in the next day or two, so you can check in with the office, and we'll put them up on the website as we get them in. January eighteenth is our, as you know, we're standing here when you come up on the third floor, we have a mini art gallery, if you will, and this is the artist reception that we host once every other month, highlighting the different local artists, visual artists that they've done. We've got paintings, we have photographs, we have everything in between. So that's kind of neat, if you want to stop by and meet the artists who actually created the artwork that you see on your way out here tonight, and that's from four to six p.m., and as we continue to highlight the arts here in Danbury as well as within City Center. The twentieth is the Danbury Vikings Annual Awards banquet, and that pretty much wraps up for most of the events we have so far, although it is early in the month. So you can always check into the office, you know, the folks that are at home, if they want to know what's happening. With that, that concludes my announcements for this evening. At this time, Mr. President Connecticut, excuse me, Mr. Minutes, please. Right. Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that we read the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies, and copies aren't filed in the legislative system, so. Motion made and seconded by Mr. Perkins, any changes, releases, corrections to the minutes presented. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds acceptance. All those in favor of acceptance of the minutes could signify by saying aye. Aye. Any imposition motion carries by the Amnesty. Mr. Majority Leader, please, the consent calendar. Thank you, Your Honor. Consent calendar for January fourth, two thousand and twelve. I should read as follows. Number three, we see the communication confirmed the appointment of Eileen Sedman to serve as member of the Michigan Engaging with the term that expires October first, two thousand and fourteen. Number four, we see the communication confirmed the appointment of Tanya Wolf Truax to serve as a member of the Charles Hyde Authority with a term to expire March first, two thousand and fourteen. Number eight, we see the communication returned the unspent balance of restricted funds originally donated by Mr. Joseph DeSillo Jr. for the Plaza Palace Theater Restoration Planning Study. These funds totaling five thousand dollars, which were restricted, represent one half of DeSillo's original ten thousand dollar donation. Number nine, we see the communication adopt the resolution that will allow the City of Danbury Police Department to accept funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation for the two thousand and twelve Comprehensive DUI Enforcement Program. This funding totaling thirty thousand five hundred and seven dollars and thirty-three cents is funded by the state at seventy-five percent and the city at twenty-five percent. The city funds are available in the police department budget fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. Number ten, we see the communication adopt the resolution that will allow the City of Danbury Library to apply for and accept funding from the Women's Club of Danbury, New Fairfield. Requested funding in the amount of two hundred dollars will be used to purchase museum and park passes. There is no local match required. Number eleven, we see the communication adopt the resolution that will allow for the state of Connecticut real estate tax abatement for the Beaver Street Apartments incorporated for the fiscal year of ending June thirty, two thousand and twelve. This is for project number zero-one-seven dash four-four-zero-eight-three, and the abatement will be in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars, and that serve as a consent calendar. Thank you, Mr. Seaberry. It's Mr. Nap. Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. Motion made and seconded by Mr. Wetmore.
Seeing none, then we'll move on with our meeting. I have several quick announcements this evening. Just believe we have a couple of wedding anniversaries this month. January 26th is Greg and Barbara Seaberry's wedding anniversary. January 28th is Lee and Mary Teichel's wedding anniversary. Couple other events throughout the month I just want to point out to you. We had a wonderful December Project Homeless Connect program over at the Bill Williams Gym, gym at Western Connecticut State University, and so we're having a volunteer appreciation hour or so at Western Connecticut Mental Health Network at 78 Triangle Street. Just to say thanks to all the folks that showed up and helped work with our homeless population in a variety of different capacities. Be welcome to stop by there if it's interesting to you. January 15th, St. James Episcopal Church, 250-year celebration of Thanksgiving. There's a 10:00 AM service. Obviously, that's across the street, and then a 12:00 lunch, luncheon at Amber Colored Aid, costs $40 per person. The 16th City Hall is closed in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. I don't have any information yet on any of the Martin Luther King Jr. events, but I'm sure I'll have those in the next day or two, so you can check in with the office, and we'll put them up on the website as we get them in. January 18th is our, as you know, we're sitting here when you come up on the third floor, we have a mini art gallery, if you will, and this is the artist reception that we host once every other month, highlighting the different local artists, visual artists that they've done. We've got paintings, we have photographs, we have everything in between. So that's kind of neat. If you want to stop by and meet the artists who actually created the artwork that you see on your way out here tonight, and that's from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and as we continue to highlight the arts here in Danbury as well as within City Center. The 20th is the Danbury Vikings Annual Awards Banquet, and that pretty much wraps up for most of the events we have so far, although it is early in the month. So you can always check into the office if the folks are at home, if they want to know what's happening. With that, that concludes my announcements for this evening. At this time, Mr. President Connecticut, excuse me, Mr. Minutes. Right.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that we read the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in Legislative Assistant's Office.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Perkins. Any changes, releases, corrections to the minutes presented? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds acceptance. All those in favor of acceptance of the minutes could signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Majority Leader, please, the consent calendar.
Thank you, Your Honor. Consent calendar for January 4, 2012. I should read as follows. Number three, we see the communication confirm the appointment of Eileen Sedman to serve as member of the term expires October 1st, 2014. Number four, we see the communication confirm the appointment of Tanya Wolf Truax to serve as a member of the Charles Hyde Authority with a term to expire March 1st, 2014. Number eight, we see the communication return the unspent balance of restricted funds originally donated by Mr. Joseph DeSillo Jr. for the Plaza Palace Theater Restoration Planning Study. These funds totaling $5,000, which were restricted, represent one half of DeSillo's original $10,000 donation. Number nine, we see the communication adopt the resolution that will allow City of Danbury Police Department to accept funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation for the 2012 Comprehensive DUI Enforcement Program. This funding totaling $30,507.33 is funded by the state at 75% and the city at 25%. The city funds are available in the police department budget fiscal year 2011-2012. Number 10, we see the communication adopt the resolution that will allow the City of Danbury Library to apply for and accept funding from the Women's Club of Danbury, New Fairfield. Requested funding in the amount of $200 will be used to purchase museum and art passes. There is no local match required. Number 11, we see the communication adopt the resolution that will allow for the State of Connecticut Real Estate Tax Abatement for the Beaver Street Partners, incorporated for the fiscal year of ending June 30, 2012. This is for project number 017-44083, and the abatement will be in the amount not to exceed $10,000, and that serves as a consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Seaberry. It's Mr. Nap.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Wetmore. Any changes or releases in the consent calendar? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Aye, so the motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, I want...
Communication appointment to the police department. Your council members, I hereby submit for your confirmation the appointment of the following individuals to the position of police officer. Number one, Mr. Ralph Anderson of Danbury, Connecticut. Mr. Anderson holds a bachelor's degree from Western Connecticut State University. He has worked in loss prevention and served on active duty with the U.S. Marine Corps, where he has earned the rank of Sergeant E5 as an aviation ordinance. Mr. Anderson has also served as a volunteer firefighter with the City of Danbury for the past 11 years. Mr. Anderson's current rank on the police officer eligibility list is number one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the communication and confirm the appointment of Mr. Ralph Anderson to the position of police officer.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Mr. Negashet. Mr. Anderson did a remarkably outstanding job on the testing procedures as placed by the Civil Service Commission. So he's a Danbury resident, and we congratulate him on his appointment, and we hope the other council, we all congratulate him. Any other council members want to remark, Mr. Anderson? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson, you want to say, to be recognized? Congratulations. The Academy starts next week. Eat your Wheaties. See you in about a year. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Second appointment is Ms. Christine Galgano of Brewster, New York. Ms. Galgano holds a bachelor's degree from State University of New York at Covestown. Ms. Galgano has been employed as a police officer with SUNY SUNY Purchase for the last four years, and has served as a volunteer EMT for the past 10 years. Ms. Galgano's current rank on the police officer eligibility list is number eight. The above individuals bring a broad range of valuable skills and experience to the Danbury Police Department that will be a tremendous asset to the department and to the citizens of Danbury. Thank you for your consideration of these appointments. Sincerely, Mark Fallow.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mrs. Stanley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and confirm the appointment of Ms. Christine Galgano to the position of police officer, City of Danbury.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Mrs. Teichels. Any comments or discussions related to Ms. Galgano? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. You don't have to go to the academy, because you're already close to being certified. We have a couple of classes to make up. Certainly, in behalf of the council, we wish you all the best as you enter to the field training part of your employment here, and I think you'll be pleased that you selected a great police department to work for, great command staff, and I think the city that cares about its public safety personnel. So congratulations on all.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I have to choose, please.
Communication point of economic development director. Members of the City Council, it is my pleasure to submit for your confirmation the name of Bruce R. Tumala as the City of Danbury's Economic Development Coordinator. Bruce has an extensive business background, most recently as the Managing Director of Sizer Group, a private business strategy consulting company in New Milford. Bruce has been a global account director for AT&amp;T British Telecom and an international sales director for 3M Optical Communications before establishing his own company. Bruce has a degree in business from the University of Southern California. He has a broad background in dealing with companies of all sizes. I am confident he will serve our city well as its economic development coordinator. Sincerely, Mark D. Fountain, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Lee.
Your Honor, I move to confirm the, your appointment of Bruce Tumala as the city's economic development coordinator.
Second by Mr. Seaberry. Any discussion related to Bruce Tumala? Did I get that right, Bruce?
No.
Tumala.
It's Tumala.
Tumala.
I never put your name. Mr. Tumala's appointment, any discussion related to this?
Yeah.
Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. First, congratulations, good luck. He's already had a busy couple of days on the job, and I know he's been pretty involved, tied up in meetings right up to 8 o'clock last night with our airport staff, works with some other folks. He's getting trial by fire, but I think he'll do it to make his job. So we're all, glad to have you here. Items three and four were on consent. Madam Clerk, I have a question.
Communication Board of Education and NEA agreement.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Cowan.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and take no action at this time.
Sure. Motion made to receive the communication. Take no action. Second by Mr. Negashet. Mr. Cabal, you have a question.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through Corporation Council, Mr. Pinter, if I'm not mistaken, the council's obligation with this contract is not to, not necessarily to accept, but our only obligation is to reject if we choose to do so. Is that correct?
The statute, the law requires, does not require you to accept the proposed agreement. It does require you to take action only if you want to reject the agreement. It's the only time you need to take a vote if you decide to reject. So the motion is correct?
I don't think that makes sense.
But you, the motion is correct, Mr. President. I would only suggest you take no part and not take no action. Exactly, it's just, that can be, it's just to mean something either rejecting or accepting. So if you receive the contract, be done with it.
Okay. There was a point in my taking no action on it, because it's my understanding that the council takes no action on this contract within 30 days of which we see to the town clerk's office, it automatically becomes adopted. Is that correct?
If there's no other action in the next four or five days, yes. I still don't know anybody to sue that is...
Well, that's why, that's why I have you here, because I want to be clear that my position on this is not that I'm overwhelmingly accepting this nor denying this, I'm just taking a big round on it.
What's that big round? There's a sure ground, which is take no action. That's my suggestion.
Okay, so you might...
I'm sorry, but to receive is the, eliminate the part and take no action.
Okay. Under your advisement, I'll do that. I'd like to just speak to that, that second will agree to that. Sir, you still have the floor, Mr. Cabal. The, I'm very concerned about this contract, and I'm very concerned about the board that is negotiating this contract. We're looking at the first year, $400,000. Second year, we're looking at $800,000. And a year ago, we were only barely able to squeak out a billion dollars to the board that in addition to their previous year monies, and, you know, things are not improving with the economy the way we all hoped they would at this point, and I'm very concerned about us putting out $1.2 million over the next two years for this, and how, and I'm going to say this, the board is going to fund this, because this council still has to go through the budget process in March and April, and, you know, last year we were cutting out freshman sports and we're eliminating things. We were going to lay off multiple teachers, and I don't think the multiple teacher layoff actually panned out, but I'm just concerned that we're doing this at $1.2 million over two years, and how, how the taxpayers can afford to keep paying that, and particularly, you know, the constituents that ask us to control and watch our spending. So that's, just want that on the record, Your Honor, for the school board to know that this coming budget cycle is probably going to be the worst we've ever seen. I thought last year's was the worst, but I believe that this year's will be the worst. And I don't know if there's any improvement on our horizon, so that's all I can say.
I'll take your word. Mr. Cabal, any other discussions related to receiving the, receiving the contracts? Any other discussions? Yes, Mr. Adolph.
Yeah, thanks for all of this. You know, in all that, I'd just like to hear the motion again.
The motion is to receive the contract.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I, I think, you know, sort of Cabal makes a point, look, we want to prepare all of our collective bargaining groups here in the city, but it's not going to be a lot of fun next year, and, you know, we have tough choices to make, and it's tough to have increases to these budgets that come right out of the taxpayers' money. There's no magic pile of money we have hanging around. If you can buy me a printing machine, I can make money in the basement, but, you know, I understand also there's a process to negotiating, and certainly, this time, Sir Cabal was giving some... So with that, any other comments? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. A motion just to receive the report. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, I have to say, please.
Communication request for ad hoc exercise and recreational facilities.
Ad hoc, we shall assist the following. Excuse me. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Nap.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to the ad hoc Corporation Council, Director of Public Works, Director of Finance, Planning Director, Director of Parks and Recreation, and the Director of Economic Development.
Ad hoc, I mean, as I require your second, Mr. Seaberry. Ad hoc, I mean, as I assist the following, since you made the motion, Mr. Nap, we can handle the committee. Mr. Scazafaba down in the corner, Mr. Nero. Madam Clerk, I have to say...
Communication donation to city emergency shelter. To our go-kart development, City Council, Sue Zabrowski's Social Service Manager. The city emergency shelter is requesting permission to receive several dress jackets, pants, socks, dress shirts, and ties from Men's Warehouse located at the Danbury Fair Mall. Senior store manager Patrick Heaton has provided dress clothing to those individuals who are seeking employment opportunities and need to dress in a professional manner. The estimated donation amount should not exceed $2,000. The city emergency shelter will contribute on a borrowing basis the dress clothing to other social service agencies within the city of Danbury. Those individuals who need permanent clothing will be able to keep a completed dress outfit. Those who need to interview for a job position will have the opportunity to be fitted and then return the outfit for others to use. The emergency shelter will enlist donations for dry cleaning from service companies who have participated and assisted at Project Homeless Connect. This cooperation among agencies seeking to assist a homeless population and those individuals at risk of becoming homeless fulfill the mayor's 10-year plan to end homelessness. The shelter is requesting permission to accept this most generous donation. Thanking you all in advance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Wetmore.
I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the estimated donation from the Men's Warehouse to the City Emergency Shelter and send an appropriate letter of thanks.
Second by Mr. Frombetta. Any discussion about this generous donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Items eight to 11, I have my consent. We have the item 12, and I agree that's a report. The clerk is...
Your Honor, what is... I have my own different motion and the reading of the board, as all members have copies, the copies are on file. Legal assistance, please.
Okay. Jackson, the reading of the report. Okay. Seeing none, Jackson is so ordered. Mr. Levy owns a can of motion now. I have 12.
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the report that confirms the appointment, the mayor's appointment of Team Natao as the Legislative Assistant.
Second. Mr. Bayes, second by... Perkins is pretty quick on that one. You ready? Mr. Dischowski, you got the other one?
Boy, you can't win both.
Mr. Bayes, seconded by Mr. Perkins. Is there a discussion related to this appointment? I think that's just out pretty good, you made it. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, I have to... Congratulations, Mrs. Fallow. Is that what would have already ended, and tomorrow, I might have said it whole?
I brought my family this evening and my students.
Everybody here, gentlemen?
I'd like to introduce my daughter and my assistant, my daughter Debbie Kelly and my sister Kelly Grusell. Thank you all. I want to thank my parents for making me what I am today.
Okay, where are we? Mr. Press, get the private reports.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we read the reading of the final report, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in Legislative Assistance Office.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Mr. Negashet. A discussion of the private report. Mr. Resini, up in the...
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to follow up to one of the public comments this, this evening regarding traffic enforcement. So I guess, what do you chief maker?
Chief.
Thank you, Chief. In your report for the traffic enforcement, you know, you can go to the numbers compared to 2011, 2019, just in the remainder of the last four months, there was an actual decrease of 50% from one year to the next year. Was there a reason why it would go down that much in the last four months from the first six months of the year, it was almost like a great even from one year to the next?
There's several reasons, but primarily, two of the four traffic officers have been out since July. One was serving a long-term administrative leave, the other was activated and is serving in Afghanistan right now. Four psych officers were on traffic tickets, and two of the four disappeared a year.
I think, if I could just add to that, if you go back historically several years ago, before we formed the traffic unit, these numbers more reflected kind of enforcement actions we would do without the motor centers. What you see last year is the spike in adding in the four officers dedicated specifically to traffic. We, one officer's in Afghanistan, it's really hard for us to take his bike away from him, he should be home shortly. Another officer, we have to internal, we have an internal promotion to put another officer on the bike, and we're working on that now.
And compounded that fact, last year, on this date, we had 149 officers. Today, we have 141 officers. Tonight, we made a couple of appointments, we're starting to address that problem, but the training process is a year-long process, and we're not conceding relief to this problem probably for a good year.
Again, just to follow up on the mayor's comment, we did see a good positive for the traffic control, that's why we're bringing it up. We do appreciate all the work they do do, and when we see a drop like that, we can figure out why that was occurring, but we do appreciate everything they do do.
I'm glad somebody's reading the report. I put those numbers out every month for years, and I don't think anybody looked at us.
Thank you, Chief.
January 8th, we'll have more police appointments for April for the Camby, Miss Losco for the Camby's neighborhood. So we've got, I think, three or four more seats to have, so we'll be, Anthony O'Perry will start soon. Mr. Curran.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to draw a shout-out to Sean Stoner, because every month, I'm amazed when I read that report, some of the stuff they pull up. I can't believe that you would get 94 tires off an X4. I mean, it's just amazing, and you guys do a hell of a job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cabal.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to, I think we'll, I don't know if it's going to be David Day or Chief Harold, but I'd like to ask about the public comment about the hydrants, in particular, Mr. Aydavola, whoever wants to, whoever wants to take that aim, maybe the fire chief, or whatever, and talk about the hydrant testing program, you know, we can make a collective effort so we can...
I can start with that. The city has approximately 2,000 fire hydrants. So, you know, since I've been here since 2005, we've got 113 is around our high point. Our low point has been around, we got to 39 at low point. Our low point has been around, we, we got to thirty-nine at low point. A hundred and thirteen hydrants is approximately five percent of the city hydrants. So, uh, before this program was started, before I got here, my understanding, we were up in the three to four hundred range. Uh, and since that program has started, the fire department does a great job of testing hydrants. So, through the testing process, we, we take two steps forward and one step back because the fire department all of a sudden along goes out and tests probably almost probably eighty percent, ninety percent of the hydrants, sometimes all of them. And through that, we, we find hydrants that aren't working properly. And we also have track, a lot of traffic accidents. We'll go out and fix a couple hydrants and we'll get two, two that are hit. So, it's, it's a continual process. Uh, I know before my time, they, they did have one year where they had a capital project and they invested some money and get some contractors involved, but, but, uh...
We were about four hundred that year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so this hundred and thirteen is, is around a hybrid. It's the end of the testing season. We usually get caught up and, and, and try to hit it harder before we start again. So, the goal is always to get it down close to zero. This is where we stand. And also, when we look at hydrants, we try to look at our streets so we don't have two fire hydrants in a row that are out. So, that if one is out, we do have other hydrants that are accessible. And of course, if the chief contacts us saying, "I need this hydrant," we prioritize that one. So, something you want to add there.
Chief, if you could just please address the hydrants and the operations of the fire department with fire hydrants and if there is a hydrant that has had a service, um, some of all the hydrants are waiting. Mayor, please ignore that.
Tina was wearing that bow tie for her tonight.
You are torturing my eyes here.
The, uh, fire department, as, as was alluded to, we do test the hydrants. We do often do a functional test, uh, every year. We try to get to as many as we can. It's somewhere around ninety to ninety-five percent every year get tested. So, that is a way that we prove that the hydrants, uh, you know, are functional and are working. And there are always a certain number of hydrants with, when you've got two thousand that are broken or non-functional. And as David alluded to, we refer them to him and make sure that they're on their list and they are on a list to be repaired. When we do have what we consider a critical hydrant, uh, we call up and we'll ask them and say, "Look, this particular hydrant, uh, because of the facility it protects or because of where it is, it may be so critical that we want it repaired." And they're very responsive. They get out and they get it repaired, often within two to three days. Uh, their repair ability, you know, their ability to get it and repair it is very responsive. Uh, our testing of the hydrants, uh, happens, uh, starting in May and usually runs through the end of October. And, uh, we, we go out and you'll see the guys out there, uh, the men and women of the department out there with the trucks, testing the hydrant, walking the streets. And then this particular, uh, program has been very effective in both, uh, letting our guys know where the hydrants are and walking the neighborhoods because it gives them exposure to all the houses, all the hydrants in the city that, you know, have the hydrant lines on it. And it's a very, very effective educational tool as well. The, uh, hydrants are generally in, in very good shape. And, and as was pointed out, we do have some that are not working and, and do freeze up. It's just the nature of the business. It involves water, anything with water. Sometimes we have that cold weather.
Thank you, chief.
Any other, uh, questions, Mr. Trumbatta?
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Cabo. Threw the chair to Mr. Iadrola, probably. Um, could you address the comment about forestry overtime? Just a little bit of explanation on why that might be?
Well, um, I really don't, uh, have any reference to what the timeframe of the overtime. But, uh, as you know, we had a little storm in October. I don't know if you guys missed that.
No, no, I, I got the bill on my desk.
And, um, uh, the forestry department, uh, became an active player in, uh, not only, uh, guiding the west of the workforce that was, uh, teamed up, uh, with, uh, parks and rec people and really directing that, uh, what is a safe and effective way to deal with trees that have fallen. Uh, they really spearheaded a lot of the operations during that storm and, uh, required a lot of overtime to do that. So, uh, it's a small crew, but they're extremely effective. And, uh, you know, I have a lot to say about, uh, how well they've worked together in not only training the balance of the department, but we've had no incidents of anybody getting hurt during that major storm. There's a lot to be said about that.
That's great, Mr. Iadrola. And our, our things go out through tree department as well and for forestry division and a great job that we did in assisting the cleanup.
Mr. Trumbatta just said they're tremendous.
Thank you, your honor. I just, um, one of the workers in my office was in a serious accident on New Year's Eve day on his way to Yukon gang. Uh, there were two adults and two children. And he came to my office yesterday and said, "How comforting and sympathetic and, and just the professionalism." And I, I really thought he was talking about my insurance company. And I said, "That's our job." He said, "No, no, I'm talking about the police department, the fire departments, city of Danbury." So, I just want to extend that out to all you guys and we appreciate it. And, and your work is, uh, recognized and appreciated. Thanks.
Mr. Nero?
Thank you, your honor. Um, three to the chief, if I may, uh, the fire chief. Thanks, sir. This is a very quick question.
We already can see the bow tie easier from over here.
She'll give a letter in your file in the morning.
Hey, it is red.
This, this hydrant discussion, I've been thinking, does it make any sense to have critical hydrants identified? And the only reason I bring that up is because if the public were to see a hydrant out, they don't know if it's, I'm going to, uh, a member of the public earlier. You don't know if it's a critical hydrant, not a critical hydrant. And I don't know how many, how many feet of hose you, you could lay from a non-critical hydrant to a critical hydrant. But what triggers? You said when you go out, you can see these things. But it, would, would it make sense to identify these hydrants so if the public sees something wrong, they can call you? Is, is there any value in that?
No, there, there really isn't any value in identifying the public matter like that. We know which ones are reporting us. We've identified certain, uh, facilities, certain establishments, and determined which hydrants we would use, which hydrants we wouldn't use in the head of a fire. Uh, and that's part of, part, parcel of our process. It's not something that we need to identify in, in some other way.
Yeah, all of that makes common sense. I mean, in a way, you, you go, I mean, this, this makes common sense. But, but my only concern is that you don't know one of those hydrants is out until for some reason you go by it, for whatever reason. And that could be three days, five days, ten days. I don't know. Am I right on that?
You may be right in some manner, but the reality is, if a hydrant gets knocked over by a car, it usually gets reported. Or if something happens to it, the homeowner or somebody nearby reports. It's not a question of hydrants being physically destroyed so much. Uh, if we test them and they don't work, that's when we report it. But, you, you wouldn't know if, you know, six months later or a year later, something happened with the valve and it didn't work anymore until we test it again. So, there's really no way that you know that.
If I, if a hydrant were leaking?
Okay.
Well, frozen. And I don't know how you like that or how you still like it. How, how could you be told that prior to you finding that out five days or ten days?
Well, in that, in that particular, if you're talking about a leaking hydrant, uh, that might be something that, you know, somebody could call in. And, and we do get phone calls like that. David Day gets phone calls like that. Uh, you know, the hydrant's leaking, the cap's off, or something's happened to the hydrant. Uh, we'll get that from citizens. We get it from city trucks. Remember, city trucks, uh, Antonio's trucks are on the road all the time, police cars, uh, fire trucks. So, we actually get pretty quick, uh, response to these things. We see them, find them pretty quickly. And the civilians and the citizens actually let us know when there's a hydrant that's not working nearby. Especially people that pay attention to their hydrants. A homeowner who wants to know if their house is protected, looks at the hydrant.
So, the bottom line is, you're comfortable knowing when a, when a critical fire hydrant is in service or not?
Yeah, and generally we are. We're very comfortable with that. While I have the microphone, I'm going to put one plug out there. We have snow coming and I'd like to put everybody on alert that, you know, when you do have a hydrant in front of your property, protecting your property, uh, this year, if you can get out and shovel out that hydrant, it would be very helpful to us because if we get more snowstorms like we did last year, it's going to be something that brings us over.
Oh, how so? Pretty spring before you have a...
Uh, Mr. Rattler, any...
Thanks, your honor. Uh, we've all been in a position from time to time where we've come across a pothole or a pit or something like that in the road. And I'd just like to say thank you to the, uh, Public Works Department Director, Iadrola, and in particular, the Highway Department, Duke Hart. Uh, the response time for these corrections has gone from months, it seems like, to days before the ink dries, no pun intended, on an email. Um, they're out there fixing the potholes. So, I got to tell you guys, it's, it's appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dischanti. Thank you.
Just wanted someone to tell the chief that New Year's Eve is over.
Okay, any discussions related to the fire force? Mr. Kern?
Thank you, your honor. Um, I'd just like to, uh, to comment on, I know the leak pickup was, was way behind and I know a lot of those bags were in poor shape. And, I mean, they just disappeared. They did a fantastic job of getting rid of the leaks this year. I was worried about those bags breaking up and being hard to pick up. But they, I mean, I drive around the city and I don't see a single leak bag. So, I just want to say thank you. I know that was a lot of work on top of all the work that took in the storm. But you did a great job on that.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. Mr. Levy?
If I can direct this through the chair to the Public Works Director.
Mr. Iadrola.
I, um, actually, I'm just asking for an update. I know the mayor's talked to you about the, the streetlights which were out during the, uh, that past storm and prior history, uh, Connecticut Conference and municipalities came to an agreement with C L P to reimburse us for streetlights that are up. And I think that number is around a half a million dollars a year we paid for the streetlights in the city of Danbury. I've put in, uh, actually through the, the, uh, computer complaints about streetlights being out. And we have a, I say, I think, an inordinate amount of streetlights throughout the city that have never been put back in place. And I was just wondering if we've made any progress on getting reimbursed for the six or seven days that the city didn't have any power, along with all the streetlights that are out currently?
Sure. Just, uh, just so you know, the city is billed on a per light basis for the streetlights that we have, uh, throughout, throughout our streets. There isn't a meter. It's not a meter grade, it's a flat grade. Uh, so, when, when a light is knocked over or if it's not working, it's critical that we get it back, uh, working because we're actually paying for it. Um, we've had, uh, you know, you guys all know how much I love C L P. I've been doing like really close to it. Um, C L P has, uh, and I dealt with this in Stanford, uh, and if you talk to any Public Works Director, uh, it's always a struggle to get them dedicated to putting, uh, the streetlights back in service. Uh, it's a really tough job. Uh, we met today, uh, with my foreman who directly deals with C L P in getting these streetlights, trying to give another push. Uh, and they scheduled a meeting and he told me next week they're coming to town to actually take a look at putting several streetlights back into a working order. Uh, there's, there's been one that's been missing. It's, uh, my Pat Pete that's right in, uh, the Kennedy Park area. Uh, it's been missing since I got here. And, uh, I, I'm, I'm going to push, that one's going to be the first one that goes back. But, uh, that is an issue. Uh, trying to get them to come in and restore these lights is, is a big, uh, struggle for us. Uh, often not the quickest response. It's been going on since I got here. Um, as far as the reimbursement, I was successful in Stanford to actually get a reimbursement, but we actually purchased all the streetlights, uh, in Stanford. Uh, we came to a point where we said, "We're going to buy them from you." We opted to do that. It was a huge undertaking. Uh, I don't think, we actually investigated doing that here. Uh, and it didn't work. The economics didn't work because we actually had put a lot of capital expenditures, expenditures into our streetlights, so the purchase price was tremendous. So, we decided to keep going forward with the way that we're proceeding. Uh, but, you know, pushing for a credit is, is, is another battle. And that's something that, uh, we haven't lost light of, uh, but we are going to try to push that issue a little harder and try to... I know the law department, uh, is working with us and trying to deal with this issue. Uh, and our decorative lights are the other ones. I mean, our decorative lights are get hit, damaged, vandalized all the time. And they're, uh, those we own, they're sixteen hundred to twenty-two hundred dollars a pop and maybe there's the installation charge. So, um, it's a struggle keeping all these lights up and running. But, uh, that's where we are struggling.
Uh, I'm familiar, the, the, they're paid for on an individual basis. And we, at one time, took an inventory in the city of Danbury to find out whether our numbers matched what we're paying. So, I understand that, um, that portion of it. I just, uh, think that Richfield has received something in the order of four million dollars back. And in the past history, Connecticut Conference and municipalities, uh, find, finally made an agreement and we in the city of Danbury also got some money. And I just would continue, because I love C L P as well as you do, I would continue to pursue that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, the law department is, uh, is on this issue. Uh, the mayor's been adamant about doing something with these streetlights. So, I think there's a strong focus in trying to really get some response out of C L P. They're possibly paying a considerable amount of money.
I mean, we have, I don't want to interrupt you, but, but we have a streetlight out on Patriot. Got taken out probably two or three weeks ago by the ice cream. Did you see that one?
Yes.
Laying down in order, I mean, it looks horrendous. It's got to be like an act of safety issue. And trying to get any response on it. Well, we'll...
We're crashing, we'll get that one up to law because we just can't get any response.
They, they won't go out. Yeah, they shut you off.
Any other discussions related to this? Okay. Uh, seeing your minds and accepting the department reports. I'll try your minds also, favor. Any opposition? Okay, before we go, I've got some ad hocks that have sunsetted. Now, when I sunset these ad hocks in the council, if you really have a burning desire for an issue, you can always bring it back. There's no big policy statement here. Trying to clean up, uh, all of these sort of committees that are, you know, a committee that has a met since January or March of two thousand and seven, it's probably something we really don't, we can do without. So, uh, but if you really have a jazz up about something, just bring it back. It's not, there's no, I'm not trying to slam anybody or trying to end anything. It's just, uh, you know, we've got all these outstanding committees and all that kind of thing. So, I'm going to start with the last of the first. The legislative assistant will email out, uh, the updated version to you in the next couple of days. Give her a couple of, the processes to you, that's something pretty directed. But, uh, we're going to go all the way back to March of two thousand and seven. It was item twenty-one. Mr. Riley was in the chair for that committee and that's been sunsetted. Um, April of two thousand and eight, day to day, there's an inter-local sewer and water agreement going back to April of two thousand and eight, item twelve. I'm sunsetting. We want to bring it back in next month or throw it back out. So, that's done. Um, October of two thousand and eight, item twenty-four, uh, is sunsetted. January of oh nine? Yes. October oh eight, item twenty-four. Would you please, just tell us, uh, purpose of that from eight? Well, I'll give you what the title, I'll give you what the title is. I don't know the exact person. Okay, warning of contracts. Uh, January of oh nine, item six, Fire Department Collection of Fees. That's sunsetted. Chief, do you remember that one?
We, we, we started.
Do you want to leave that out?
Yeah, please.
Okay, I'll leave that out then. Sorry. Uh, January of oh nine, item eleven, Danbury Baseball. Uh, I think Mrs. Stanley was working on that. Bring it up. Is referred to my office? Okay, well, if you need it, I'll back it to you and I'll take care of it. And maybe Mr. Hatton, maybe he'll do something about this.
I, I, I don't recall it, but I...
I think we made a donation to the, um, to the travel team.
Okay.
So, that's done. Uh, but if there's a problem, come back to me. That's item eleven. Uh, May of oh nine, item one, Purchase of Land, White Locust. That's sunsetted. August of oh nine, item eleven, Smoke Free Zones. Sunsetted. October of oh nine, item one, Directional Science of City Property. Sunsetted. Mrs. Stanley will be happy about this one. Uh, January of oh ten, item two, Amendment to the Pedal Ordinance to Rogers Park. However, you don't get off the hook because under the charter now, Mr. Plantis can craft a plan for how we're going to do this, so we're going to look for your input. So, we just don't need to put in ordinance anymore according to Mr. Pink. Um, April twenty-ten, Traffic Code Ordinance, item twenty-three. August of oh-ten, Mr. Day, Sewer and Water, Rooster School. You got nothing.[1765.02] Sunsetted.
Number?
Number nine. September of oh ten, item six was a leaf farm assessment study, that's sunsetted. Item seven, tax default ordinance, sunsetted. February, okay, February of, February oh eleven. Item four was Rogers Park and other city parks. I told Mr. Visconti, that's sunsetted. I think that's it for, for this meeting. Okay. A few more. March of oh eleven, our wonderful parade public assemblies ordinance, sunsetted. March of oh eleven, item, that was item two. Item three was police services recovery fees. Chief, do you want to keep that one?
No.
June of oh eleven, a deferral assessment increase, Bell's Place, sunsetted. Item fourteen. June of oh eleven, item thirteen, Mr. Shepherd, the deferral assessment for Paul Mitchell. You want to pick the direction of that from me? Okay. So that's item thirteen, Paul Mitchell, sunsetted. August of oh eleven, request to purchase city land, Bell's Land and Kennedy Avenue, item ten, sunsetted. August of oh eleven, reconsideration to purchase city land at Lake Allen Extension, item nine, sunsetted. I believe that's all I have for tonight, but I'll ask the clerk to, I've got an updated list to you, so you can be tried. With that, tomorrow is Mr. Segulare's birthday, I believe. And I also want to congratulate Mr. Segulare and the Finance Department on a phenomenal audit this year. They broke exactly even, almost to the penny in the black. So good job, David, and obviously, you'll be equally challenged, but I want to congratulate you. The guy, I'm going to take a motion for adjournment. Made by, too very seconded by Mr. Arrow, my favorite journalist of the day.
We're asking you to please refrain from using your handheld electronic device while operating your motor vehicle. This has caused citizens property damage, personal injury, and loss of life. So please, when you're operating your motor vehicle, keep your hands on the wheel, your eyes on the road, not on your phone. Thank you.